Welcome to the Ward 1 Budget Town Hall Meeting. Continuing to practice Mayor Gray started when he took office almost two and a half years ago, he will brief the district, ward by ward, on his proposed budget for the coming year. I believe you will see a budget that is thoughtful, progressive, and passionate. I believe you will see a budget which not only invests in, but actually sizes the opportunities of the future for the district and its residents. Please join me in welcoming Mayor Vincent C. Gray.
Thank you all. Thank you all. Thank you all very much. Good evening. Boy, it's wonderful to be here. Thank you all very much for coming out. You know, Juan and Frank are our ones. You know what our ones are? Our Office of Neighborhood Engagement Liaisons and Representatives in Ward 1. And boy, do they do a great job. Now, that's the kind of enthusiasm that you want to see. How about a big hand for Juan and for Frank? I want to thank you all for coming out tonight here at Columbia Heights. It's one of our recreation centers that was built in recent years, and it is really a nice place. I have been here any number of times myself. Always look forward to coming back and to be able to look upon a place where we've made a major investment. I know Councilmember Graham would be with us tonight, but he's not able to be with us tonight because he's returning from a trip tomorrow. So I know some of his staff are here, and I hope they will convey to him our appreciation for his support and that we look forward, of course, to connecting with him during this budget cycle. So I saw Calvin earlier. There he is back there, and I see Wilson over here. So, gentlemen, please let Councilmember Graham know that we wished he were here tonight, and we, of course, wish him the best, and hope he had a good time on his trip. I want to thank the organizations that have sponsored this. This is a lot of sponsors that we have tonight, and I'm really quite grateful. First of all, we have A&amp;C's 1, A&amp;C 1A, 1B, 1C, and 1D, all of whom are sponsors of tonight's budget presentation. So thank you all very much. We also have the Lee Jordan Parks Civic Association. That's one of our sponsors tonight. Strengthening Ward 1 Together, U Street Neighborhood Association, Meridian Hill Neighborhood Association, Pleasant Plains Civic Association, North Columbia Heights Civic Association, Reed Cook Neighborhood Association, the U Street Neighborhood Association, the Ward 1 Dems, and the Ward 1 Republicans, both of whom are sponsors here tonight. So thank you all very much. In addition to that, the Georgia Avenue Business Alliance and the Georgia Avenue Community Development Task Force. So I haven't seen these sponsor lists for any of the other wards that are coming up, but they're going to have to do pretty good to be able to top Ward 1. So thank you, Ward 1, for hosting us tonight. All right. We are joined tonight by a gentleman who I have thoroughly enjoyed working with. This is actually his last set of Budget Town Hall meetings. Now, he's going to retire after the Budget Town Hall meetings are soon after that are done. But what he doesn't know is the Budget Town Hall meetings will be going on until 2017 now, so you can't... In any event, he's been with the CFO's office for 16 years. He has been the CFO for 13 years and really has done an outstanding job. Someone who I thoroughly enjoy working with, just a consummate professional. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Natwar Gandhi.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your leadership. Appreciate your kind words. Mr. Mayor, this is a very pleasant duty for me to be here today because I am so proud of the economic leadership, financial leadership that you have provided to the city, to this district, so that we are among the best, if not the best financially managed in the city, in the country. In February, we were on Wall Street. Mayor presented $417 million of surplus for the past fiscal year, and we now have reached a billion and a half in our fund balance. This is truly a remarkable turnaround to have shown, and Mayor deserves a great deal of credit for this comeback. Because what Mayor had faced was something like $700 million of reduction in fund balance, another $200 million to have been depleted under his year, first year as a mayor. Instead, Mayor added enough money in the fund balance to reach billion and a half. So if you look at the $500 million deficit that we have seen in mid-'90s to see billion and a half fund balance today, what you have is a $2 billion turnaround. Other cities that have gone through such experience, like Philadelphia, New York, none has been able to come back as well and as fast as this city has. And Mayor deserves a great deal of credit for this distinguished leadership. My duty today is a very happy one in that I'm here to certify the budget that Mayor has put together for 2014. That budget is balanced, not only for the year for which it is designed, 2014, but also for the entire plan period. And it is not just balanced. It is balanced structurally, meaning that we are not spending anything more than what we take in. That means that we will not be using any of our fund balance, and that we will remain very judicious in our borrowing. That is remarkable. And all that is possible because city is economically very vibrant. As Mayor is going to point out a little later, we are adding 1,200 new people to the city every month. People want to come to the city. City is indeed a hip city. People, younger people, want to come, live in the city. Residents who have been here, they enjoy the city. They want to walk to the theater, to the restaurants, to the bars, and all that. That shows the vibrancy, and that is because of Mayor's economic leadership. And if you have any doubt, you can go to rooftop of any building here and see how many cranes are zooming around in the city. Fifty-plus. That is extraordinary. So I'm very happy to come here and say that the Mayor's budget is balanced in a very judicious way, and in addition, he has taken care of the needs of the city: economic development needs, housing needs, and all other kinds of social needs that we face. So I appreciate his leadership, and I have my colleagues, Robert Farr, Basil Faccino, and Gordon McDonald. Mr. Mayor, they will answer the questions they have. Unfortunately, I got to go. But I appreciate very much, and also have been a great delight to work with your staff, Budget Staff, Eric Goulet, City Administrator Alan Lou, and they have been, you know, great in terms of their cooperation in forming this budget. Thank you very much.
I want to thank Dr. Gandhi for coming out tonight. As you can see, he's got a little bit of a gait there, but he's playing injured tonight. So thank you very much, Dr. Gandhi. Thank you for being here, and go home and get off that leg and rest yourself. Okay. You know, as we start this, I want to mention some information that Dr. Gandhi mentioned to me, and that is, in our capital budget, just in Ward 1, that's over several years, right, Gordon, we have spent almost $400 million in building things here in Ward 1, which is a lot of money and a lot to show for that. And we also, the period to date this year, $189 million, is that right? $189 million. And one of those will be a school that I will mention when we get to that point in the budget. So, that having been said, we're going to roll into this, and we invite you to ask questions as we get through this. You know, Dr. Gandhi mentioned the district's fiscal turnaround, and let me mention it also. This chart shows where we have come from. This is a chart that Dr. Gandhi likes to keep with him at all times in his pocket. On the very left-hand side, you see that little arc that's below the line? That was when the district had a deficit of $500 million. We were in the hole. And we worked our way out of that. As you can see, during Mayor Williams' years, it went up substantially, and then it went down. In fact, when we came into office, one of the things we said is we were going to work to try to restore the fiscal stability to the District of Columbia, and in fact, we have. And you can see it now going up steeply. We are now at the second highest point in the history of the District of Columbia with $1.5 billion in our fund balance, and that is a very strong position to be in. When we went to New York, we met with all the rating agencies, and we got, just on March 21st, we got the news that we had gotten an upgrade from Standard &amp; Poor's. And that is really hard in this fiscal climate nationally to get an upgrade in anything. We got upgraded from A+ to AA-, which is a substantial increase. And I should say this, but Standard &amp; Poor's was the rating agency that downgraded the United States government. So if they've upgraded us, maybe that means we're better than the United States government. I don't know, but that's good news. This budget is balanced, as was said, and again, I want to thank our Budget Staff, some of whom are sitting over here. I want to especially salute our Budget Director, the Mayor's Office of Budget and Finance Director, who does a great job, Eric Goulet. Eric, I want to thank you for what you do. Worked with me for my entire four years in the council, and then we came together over to the Mayor's office, and a great team working with him. And you may well hear from the Capital Budget Director as we get further into the evening as well, and that's John McGah. John, thank you for what you do. In fact, we were at the same place just before we came here, right? Over in Noma, which is doing extremely well. You'll be happy to know, there are no new taxes and no new fees in this budget. No new taxes and no new fees. Not getting in your pocket, ladies and gentlemen. We have sequestration is upon us, and we have factored that into this budget. We got a new revenue estimate in February that said we would get $190 million more this year, but it would have been higher but for sequestration. We think we could lose as much as $50 million because of sequestration. So we have factored that in. We would have had a revenue estimate of $240 million if we hadn't had sequestration facing us. So we have factored it in. We could lose as much as $50 million because of sequestration. So in the course of that, if it happens, we've already factored it in, and we've accounted for it. So it won't be any reduction because of that if it does happen. Not only did we not add any new taxes, we eliminated the tax on out-of-state municipal bonds, and also possessory interest tax on housing this purchase under the Land Acquisition for Housing Development Opportunities Program, which is kind of a double tax. The possessory interest tax and the property taxes were both taxes on housing purchase under that program, so we have eliminated one of those taxes. We also have seen some real growth, and it's one of the reasons why we are where we are today. First of all, we've added income tax revenue this year of $166 million, and next year, $152 million more that we expect. That will be because of lowering unemployment. We've gone from 11.2% down to 8.6%. Our growing population, which Dr. Gandhi alluded to, and of course, because of job growth. Since January of 2011, we have added, in the private sector, we've added 32,000 new jobs in the city, and we have lost 4,000 government jobs, which was expected. We knew that the government was going to start contracting, and that's why we have worked hard to try to start to create a new economy, and it is starting to pay off. So we have a net increase of 28,000 new jobs. 32,000 in the private sector, 4,000 lost in the public sector, 28,000 new jobs, and we're going to continue to grow. We also, because we're adding more businesses, and a lot of new businesses here in Ward 1, right? Go around on 14th Street. We've got a lot of new businesses around there. Was it Lime Fresh? Have you all been in Lime Fresh? Pretty good. They just called us the other day and said that they are going to be opening a new place on 7th Street Northwest. And they also said they will be working to hire 40 new people, and they want to hire all 40 of them as residents of the District of Columbia. Isn't that fantastic? Our business tax revenue has gone up because of new businesses and thriving businesses, and also our sales taxes are going up. One of the things that we are trying to do is end retail leakage. How many people know what retail leakage is? Anybody know what retail leakage is? Thank you, Dottie. That's exactly right. From the city to the suburbs. What it means is people who live here and go shop somewhere else and spend their money somewhere else. People who say, "I live in the city, but I'm going to Pentagon City this weekend. I'm going to White Flint." Y'all have all heard that before. I know nobody in here has done that, but I'm sure you've heard that before. Well, we're working to try to end retail leakage, keep our money in the city. We lose $1 billion a year in people going to shop somewhere else. You know, one of the examples I use of our ability to start to stem that is Costco. Anybody been to Costco yet? Costco in the city, okay? Well, the first three days that it was open, we had an average daily sales, believe this or not, we had an average daily sales of $750,000. That's a lot of money, isn't it? That's a lot of money. And so I do, in my own compulsive way, I do, whenever I go up there, the first thing I do is ride through the parking lot. Anybody know where I ride through the parking lot? Checking those tags. That's right. Checking those tags and see where folks are from. About half of the tags when I've been up there are from DC, and the other half are from Maryland and Virginia and other places, which means we're not only ending retail leakage in the city, we're actually creating retail leakage somewhere else, bringing those purchasers into the District of Columbia. The next slide shows you the deployment of our budget and the percentage distribution, even though the dollars have gone up substantially over the last several years, the percentage distribution hasn't changed much. And, you know, contrary to popular belief, we spend a lot of money on human services in the District of Columbia. Of 100% of our expenditures, 40% go to human support services, 20% on public education, 11% on public safety, and then the rest distributed between Public Works, Economic Development, and the financing of our projects. So a lot of money spent on human beings in the District of Columbia. One of the things we've tried to do is be as transparent and engaged as we possibly can. And so what we have done is we've gotten out and meet, to meet and talk with anybody that we'll talk with. Our Budget Staff, Eric and his staff, have been out virtually everywhere. We've been out. We'll be all across the city. Our deputy mayors, our chief of staff, our deputy chief of staff, they've all been out to make presentations even before we finished the budget, to let people know what we were thinking and to hear from people. And that has influenced what we have in this budget to a substantial extent. Now we're making the rounds again to say, "All right, this is what we're doing in this budget, and we'd like to hear from you, but we'd also like to have you support this budget if you possibly can, if there are things in here that you like," and I think there probably are. That just gives you a list of those agencies. Now, some of you have seen our One City Action Plan, and there are three priorities in that action plan: to grow and diversify the district's economy, to educate and prepare the workforce for the new economy, and to improve the quality of life for all. And our budget now, the budget is framed by those priorities, and that's what we have done in terms of spending our dollars. We had a total of $389 million new dollars that we expect for fiscal year 14, and this will show you how we're spending those dollars on those three priorities. First of all, when we had the One City Summit last year, we heard from people about those priorities, and we wanted to make sure people understood. We weren't bringing folks down to the convention center just to spend a day, that we really were serious about listening to folks. And what people told us was that the top priority for them was affordable housing, that we needed more affordable housing in the city, and not just the District of Columbia, but other cities as well. So in this budget, I am proposing to invest in affordable housing, $100 million new dollars to create more affordable housing here in the District of Columbia and wards all across the city. $87 million will go into the Housing Production Trust Fund, which is an instrument we have used now for several years. $67 million this year, and then $20 million for next year and fiscal year 14, so we can get started right away. We also, in the first two years, we had to make some choices that we didn't want to make. Was money going to go, the 15% from deed, recordation, and transfer taxes into the Housing Production Trust Fund, or were we going to put money into the Local Rent Supplement Program to make sure that those who already were living somewhere had a chance to do that? Very difficult choice, a choice that we made, but we now are at a point financially where we don't have to do that in fiscal year 14. We're going to have the money from the deed, recordation, and transfer taxes go into the Housing Production Trust Fund, but we have enough money then to budget also for the Local Rent Supplement Program in order to be able to support people in that program. Now, there's another $13.1 million, and we'll show you that list very quickly. We got money that will be going also additionally into the Local Rent Supplement Program to add to $2 million that we already had in hand. Anybody know what the HPPAP program is? Home Purchase Assistance? Home Purchase Assistance means that we provide support for people who are first-time home buyers in the city, to try to attract and support people who want to move into the city, and some of them, of course, are very young families who are just starting out. We also are putting $1 million in the Rapid Re-Housing Program, which will support homeless families, $1 million into the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, which means that people that may be at the threshold of falling off will be able to stay in the homes that they're in. Makes good human sense and makes good financial sense because it's very expensive to house a family that's homeless, and imagine the emotional toll that it takes on people. We are losing about $4 million in victim services money this year from the federal government. We are going to cover that $4 million and then add another $3 million so that we can continue to try to stem domestic abuse in the city. And believe it or not, we had no technology, no software applications to be able to manage the housing programs in the 15 different agencies that administer housing programs, so we're going to put $4 million in it, so it will make it a lot easier to know what our housing, affordable housing stock is across the city. We also are going to work to ensure that every neighborhood is safe in the city, to continue to try to make sure every neighborhood is safe. We had last year the lowest number of homicides in this city than we have had in about 50-plus years: 88 homicides. That was quite an accomplishment, wasn't it, Chief? Thank you so much for being out here tonight, and you all did a great job at MPD to make that happen. 88 homicides. That's the lowest number we've had since, what, 1961, I think it is, and that is a long time ago. I keep up. I read those statistics every day, and as of today, we're about where we were last year, which means that even though we're so much lower, we still are maintaining pace, and I think we're going to beat that. Think we can beat it this year? Okay, we definitely going to try. I know you will. And you and Chief Lanier and the other leadership are doing a great job with our officers. And we are adding officers in this budget. We are going to get up to 4,000 officers in the Metropolitan Police Department, which will be the first time in many, many years that we've had that many officers, right, Chief? 4,000 officers, and they will be deployed all across the city because we have a growing population that needs to be protected just like everybody else. We also are going to invest in new equipment. We're going to invest annually $7.2 million in the Metropolitan Police Department, which I think is about $21.6 million over the next three years. We'll have a bunch of new cruisers and other equipment in the police department, right, Chief? Yes, sir. You're welcome. And we're going to invest in the Fire and Emergency Medical Services also. $8 million a year, which will purchase about, I don't know, 80 to 90 new ambulances, new ladder trucks, new pumpers, about 144 new pieces of equipment over the next three years in the Fire and Emergency Medical Services. So we're going to have the best-equipped police department and fire department in the nation, you all, bar none. We also are going to add more cadets. We got $700,000 going into that program. We'll add 10 cadets in our police cadet program and also in our fire cadet program, and we hope that they are young people who live in the District of Columbia, who will want to be law enforcement officers or firefighters, medical EMTs, and will work and stay in the department. I talked about the domestic violence funds already that we're adding, $4.4 million. Anybody know what a reimbursable detail is? Who knows what a reimbursable detail is? I know you do, Wilson. I don't have to ask you. I know you do. I'm sure Calvin does too. Reimbursable detail, for those that don't know, means that we are investing, people who like to go out, you know, to our bars and, you know, where folk have bands and music and stuff, and sometimes folks kind of act up, right? Not often, but reimbursable detail means that we are putting money in the ABRA budget to be able to pay off-duty police officers to be able to be there and make sure that these continue to be safe experiences for the people in our city. We already have money in there. We're going to add more. We have lost, how much, Eric, about $35 million in federal funds, and we've actually replaced every dollar of that with our own local money, so people won't see a reduction in services. A lot of times when we lose this money, people don't realize it wasn't us cutting the budget. It's the federal government that's cutting budgets, and then we get blamed for having cut a budget that we had no control over in the first place. So we were in a position this year to be able to, every dollar of federal money that we lost, we are able to put that money back in the budget through our own local dollars. And one of the biggest areas will be $28 million going into our TANF program. How many people know what the TANF program is? Yes, sir. I know you do, David. David Burns is our director, who is doing a great job in DHS managing, making a transformation... David, stand up. Stand up, David. He is making a real transformation in how we run the welfare program, for want of a better way to put it. Back in 1996, a new law was passed that said people had five years, and then you were out. The District of Columbia, and I think it was done for good humane reasons, said, "Okay, five years may be up. I know the federal dollars will be gone, but we're going to figure out how to continue to make these investments ourselves." Well, we have said, "That really doesn't, that really isn't helpful to people because it means that there are far too many people then who become dependent on those dollars without being able to be prepared for a job and get a job." So David is leading a transformation on behalf of the city, what I think will be one of the most significant transformations of so many of the programs we see in this city, and he will be remembered for having done that. We have thousands of people who are on TANF right now. They are now getting assessments, and one of the things that DHS has done is look at it and say, "Okay, we got these people who are receiving TANF. We got people over here who are homeless families." And by the way, in many instances, they're the same people. So they now, through the Virginia Williams Center, they've put those services together, and they now have the same case manager. It used to be you'd have, they'd have, one group would have a case manager over here, another group would have a case manager over here, and they were the same people who would wind up with two case managers. We've now merged those programs. They have the same case manager, and they're working to get assessments. I think all assessments will be done by the end of September. Is that right, David? And then they're getting training, and you know what? After people get an assessment, and they get a training, and they get training, and they've hit 60 months, then we're going to say, "Look, you know, it's time to go to work." So people will be expected to go to work. They will get their six, they will get their checks reduced on a monthly basis until they get down to zero. But there's a lot of incentives. If you get a job, some of that income is disregarded. Is that right? You can keep it if you have a job. If you're earning the money, you can keep it. You still get food stamps. You still get Medicaid coverage, and by the way, we now have universal health care in America, and we are close to it here in this city. have universal health care in America, and we are close to it here in this city. So, there's a lot of benefits we will continue to provide, and that will be available to you if you do what we ask you to do, and that is just get a job, and we're going to give you every opportunity to be able to do that. We also are going to invest in homeless youth, half a million dollars this year and another million dollars in fiscal year 14. And in order to make sure that we keep people on, because they were supposed to, they were supposed to start coming off now, to be able to keep people on the program, the cash program, we're adding 6 million dollars to this budget that will allow people to continue to get a full check for the next year, is that right? For the next year, as we continue to phase this out. We are creating something new this year, at least I want to create it, and it's in the budget. It's called the One City Fund. The One City Fund. The One City Fund will be available to nonprofits, and it will be a grant program that our nonprofits can go in and apply for, and the money will be available for education, or job training, or health, or services to seniors, or arts, or public safety, or the environment, almost anything imaginable. It will not be run by the government. We're going to hand the money over to the community foundation to run on our behalf. People can apply for a grant, organizations can apply for a grant up to 100,000 dollars, and you will then be responsible to the community foundation for doing what we think would be innovative things. You have to be a 501(c)(3). Everybody know what a 501(c)(3) is? I was, I worked for 501(c)(3) so much in my career, and that's about it. Have a good idea, have a defensible idea, be able to have a defensible, you know, track record financially also. We're not going to give money to organizations that don't have a good track record financially, that doesn't make any sense. But, if you do the math, if we get 15 million dollars, we probably will be able to award, I don't know, 125, 130 grants next year under this program, and it will be all administered by the community foundation. No involvement of the executive, no involvement of the council, and that will keep the politics out of this, and they have a track record for having been able to do this. We also are working to be able to improve our libraries in the city. Where's Jenny Cooper? There she is, stand up, Jenny. Jenny has done a fantastic job managing our libraries in the District of Columbia.[757.94][757.94](APPLAUSE) I don't have any reservations about saying she is the best librarian in America, and when she... Well, come on, give it up, y'all.[768.82][768.82](APPLAUSE) We made a commitment several years ago that we were going to upgrade our neighborhood libraries. I think we have 25, and how many have we done? 14 so far?
Seventeen. Eighteen underway, now we're done. Eight left. Seventeen, eighteen.
Seventeen, okay. So, we also have money in this budget to be able to expand the hours of our libraries. Libraries with this budget will be open every day of the week, ladies and gentlemen.[802.04][802.04](APPLAUSE) That will include the newly renovated Mount Pleasant Library, and if you haven't been there, you need to go there because it is really a nice-looking building at this stage. It does a great job.[816.44][816.44](APPLAUSE) Eight million dollars to expand the hours, 2 million dollars to be able to add more books and more reading material to all of our libraries, and 103 million dollars to finally upgrade the Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Library in downtown Washington.[834.73][834.73](APPLAUSE) That rendering that you see over to the right, lower right, is Martin Luther King Library in terms of what it would look like after this renovation. 103 million dollars would not nearly get it done, but we are proposing to add several more floors on the building that will help pay for the renovation of the library. I think that whole renovation would probably take up to two years, is that right, Jenny?
I think it will.
Okay, so, anyway, this needs to get done, and I hope you all come down and testify on why this needs to... I guess they've already testified, haven't they? And we've had people testify, but they still can make their sentiments known. So, a great addition to our libraries. Also, for our seniors, Dr. Thompson, we want to be what kind of city?
Age-friendly.
Age-friendly. We want to be an age-friendly city. I was, I was with, I was with Dr. Thompson and his staff just the other day at a luncheon. We have, get this, we have 195 centenarians in the city. Everybody know what a centenarian is?
Hundred years.
Yeah, somebody who's 100 years old. 195, and what was astounding was, piece of information I was given, only 20% of those folks live in nursing home-type environments. The rest of the folks live in the community, and we can do even better than that, and that is what we're going to be working with, with our age-friendly city program. We have a team now that will be going into nursing homes, that will be working to identify seniors who could live somewhere else in the community, and we're going to try to get them out, right, Dr. Thompson? So, that's going to be his job, that'll be his legacy, and that will be, we have created an age-friendly city, a city that says, "Age is only a number. You don't have to be in one of those places unless you absolutely physically have to be, and you don't have to retire either when people think you have to retire." We're going to be a city that recognizes the talent that we have in this city and make sure we preserve it, right, Dr. Thompson?
Absolutely.
All right. What do you think, Jackie?[966.11][966.11](LAUGHING) I've already talked about the municipal bonds. So, we also have a hospital that we own in the city called the United Medical Center. Used to be Greater Southeast Hospital, and we are working hard now to try to restore the fiscal viability of that hospital. We just entered into a contract with an organization called Huron that is there to help turn around the hospital. You'll probably be hearing some information in the next couple of days about some findings that they've already, they've already made that will be helpful in restoring the fiscal stability to the hospital. And, we have 20 million dollars in this budget to be able to start to restore the, start to build a new hospital there. That hospital was built in 1950, it was opened in 1950, and people wouldn't build hospitals like that anymore. 450-bed hospital. We don't need 450 beds in a hospital anymore. Why? Because so many conditions that people went into the hospital for back in 1950, you don't now. It's all outpatient, and things that you were in the hospital for, for seven, eight, nine, 10 days, now it's a day, some of which reason, of course, is the insurance company says, "You got to go after being here for one or two days." So, we just don't have a need, right, Dr. Pappas? We don't have a need for 450 beds. So, we're looking at building a much smaller hospital, a newer hospital, that will meet the needs of the people, you know, who would use the hospital that side of the city. We also are investing in the arts. We're putting 250,000 dollars in a strategic plan budget, and for those who follow the arts, we are putting 5 million dollars for the next six years into the Arts and Humanities Budget, and that will result in public art being crafted and created and will be available all over our city. How many of you all know that we had an archives? And I'm not talking about the National Archives, okay? We have our own archives in the city. Anybody know that? Well, you better know, Brian. We have a place where a lot of stuff is stored. We have stuff that is dating back to, right, John? 1790? Can you believe that, 1790? How many years ago was that? Like, how many? 200 and, 200 and, 220? Something, 223, something like that? 223 years ago. Stuff that old, and it's stored in a building that is in what they call the alley, near the court. Anybody know where Nailor Court is? You're the only one in the room, Dottie. Anyway, we are going to open a new archives, and we have a couple of possibilities as to where it might be, but we are going to put in 4 million dollars to start the process next year, and then 44 million dollars to create a place where the artifacts that we have in our possession can be properly stored, and our kids can go and see these things. What a great learning experience it will be for our children to be taken from their schools to our own local archives and learn about what we're doing there. We also are going to expand parks. Let's say Jesus. There he is. And where's John Stokes? There he is. That's the dynamic duo of DPR right there. Jesus is our outstanding director, and John does it all.[1180.33][1180.33](LAUGHING) Did you all know, by the way, that we made a decision, I think it was last August or September, to put money into upgrading 32 playgrounds across the city? 32 playgrounds. They had the plans done for all 32 playgrounds by Christmas, and now we are getting ready to have the start of the work on those playgrounds, and they all prob, most of them will be finished by the end of the summer, right? Maybe the middle of the summer. That's pretty doggone good, man. 32 play, we've never had a playground program that extensive in the District of Columbia, and I want to thank Jesus and John for the work they did to help make that happen.[1220.01][1220.01](APPLAUSE) We're also going to create green space. Everybody know where Noma is? Florida Avenue, Florida Avenue, right? Florida Avenue. 50 million dollars in parks there. We're building a new Fort Dupont Ice Arena. We are building a new Barry Farb Recreation Center that will cost us 26.4 million dollars. New athletic fields and a new Southeast Tennis and Learning Center also will be built costing us 18 million dollars. Streetcars are coming back to the District of Columbia. How many people been around, when streetcars, been around long enough to know when streetcars were here before? I know y'all don't want to own up to it. That wasn't yesterday. We used to have streetcars, but these won't be the same kind of streetcars. These will be different streetcars. The first line, where's Terry? Terry, first line will be open this year, right?
Yeah.[1275.26][1275.26](LAUGHING) First line will be open on 8th Street, running from 3rd and 8th Street Northeast
out to Spingarn High School, Oklahoma Avenue, first line, and then it will go further out to Minnesota Avenue, and then eventually we'll go all the way out to the shrimp boat, and then we'll come around and go all the way back across town to Georgetown, is that right? So, it's going to be a brand-new mode of transportation that we have in the city. New bike lanes, new bike trails, new bike-share stations. We're putting in 54 this year, 10 more in the next budget. We have the most robust bike-share program in America. Think we were the fir, one of the first, right? Now, New York and Chicago are doing this as well. They'll probably overtake us because they got so many people living there, but we will still always have been the first and the best to have done this. That won't change. And we're also opening, the reopening, the Georgetown DMV. Lucinda's still here? Where's Lucinda? There she is, over there. Lucinda, baby, stand up, Lucinda, stand up. She does a great job with our DMV. That is, that is absolutely one of the hardest jobs in the government, and sometimes thankless. And she's done a great job with upgrading the customer services in DMV. We got a new DMV that we opened just a couple of weeks ago over in Rhode Island Row, and we're opening a completely renovated DMV in Georgetown. So, we'll have four when that one opens, is that right? Four DMVs, and you could do a lot of that business now online. So, we're also funding fully our, we're madder, our metro commitment, both in our operating and capital budget, that will be around 400 million dollars total, is that right? 400 million dollars. All right. We got an exciting new program for you all coming up in this budget, and that is, we are going to, over a period of five years, we are going to replace every supercan in the District of Columbia, and that will be at no cost to anybody. In fact, that will be done, that will actually be done in the first two years of the program, fiscal year 14 and fiscal year 15. And then, we're going to replace all the recycling bins, and that will be done to make them larger. You'll get larger recycling bins, and then we're going to start the process all over again, so there will be a perpetual cycle of making sure that everybody has a relatively new supercan and a new recycling bin. And we know you've had to pay for those in the recent past, but you won't have to do that anymore. We also are going to, we're going to try to make our trashcans on the street pest-proof. You know, there's no tops on those strike, those strike, those cans, right? And we got some pretty crafty rats in the city, so we're going to, we're going to try to make sure that they are rat-proof. I don't know how they will be rat-proof, but they will be rat-proof, right, Eric? They'll be rat-proof. We're putting a million and a half dollars also in Bloomingdale. How many people, anybody in here live in Bloomingdale or live near Bloomingdale? You know it's been flooding for 100 years, and that's the truth. 100 years we've had flooding in Bloomingdale. And where's our city administrator? There he is, stand up, Alan. Alan Liu is our city administrator. He, he just gets it done, man. He's the guy that built the convention center, he built the ballpark, and now he has led a task force that has found a solution to the 100-year flood, and that is a task force that is going to capture the water at McMillan, and then we will gradually release it, and they hope, there hopefully will be no more flooding in Bloomingdale. If there is no more flooding in Bloomingdale, we get the credit. If there is flooding, Alan gets the blame, okay? No, I'm sure it will be done well and done right. We also, also, we are, for the first time in a case of up to seven years for some people, we are giving pay raises to our district government employees.[1525.41][1525.41](APPLAUSE) And that includes the union members and the non-union members, so everybody gets a pay raise, and we are covering all of our current pension liabilities. So, our second priority is educating and preparing the workforce for the new economy. We are going to invest almost 80 million dollars in our public education system here in the District of Columbia. We set out, my first year in office, for those of you who, who might remember this, if you remember what I said in the State of the District address in 2011, well, you need a life. I can barely remember what I said in 2011, but one of the things I did say was that we were going to stop this practice, not stop it, but bring down this practice of having to pay the tuition for our children with disabilities in private schools. Anybody know how much we were paying? The year I came into office, we were paying an ungodly sum of money, 168 million dollars for private schools to serve our children with disabilities. Now, it's not about, it's really not about the money, okay? It's about saying that we want to be a jurisdiction, a city, that makes sure that no matter what your challenges may be, you have a chance to go to a public school if your family wants you to go there. So, we have worked hard. We started with over 2,200 kids who were in private schools. We are now down, I think, to maybe 1,300 kids. Not only have we brought down the numbers, we've brought those kids back into our public schools, our charter schools, our DC public schools, and you know where that budget has come from? The first, first, the year we came in, 168 billion dollars, the fiscal year 14 budget will be 80 million dollars. We have brought down that budget by 88 million dollars and reinvested most of that money back into our public education system to make it easier for our children with disabilities to be able to go to school. Now, we also are making capital investments. We will be investing over the next six years in our Ward 1 high schools. Banneker is going to get a renovation between now and 2018. There will be 63 million dollars that will be invested in Banneker, first 2.2, then 21 million, then 40 million. And Washington Metropolitan High School, which a lot of people don't know exists or know that it is a public high school, will get an investment of 13, excuse me, of 11 million dollars over the next couple of years. We also are going to be investing across the city in middle schools. We will modernize all the city's middle schools during the period of this plan, including a new middle school in Brookland and a new middle school in Shaw. And we're investing in several Ward 1 elementary schools. Adams will be getting, over the next several years, an investment of almost 13 million. Marie Reed, everybody's familiar with Marie Reed, right? Marie Reed will be getting an investment of 38 million dollars. Bancroft, an investment of 18 million dollars. Tubman, Tubman on 13th Street will be getting an investment of about 14 million dollars. And Parkview, Parkview will be getting an investment of 7 million dollars, and we've already done some work there. Those are all Ward 1 schools. We also will be working to do something that I think is really a good thing. Now, the way I phrase this is probably going to sound odd, that we are actually increasing from 50% to 25%. Now, doesn't that sound odd? That's a reduction from 50 to 25%. But in this instance, what we're trying to do is to provide more services to children with disabilities early in life so we can perhaps eliminate and mitigate the extent of their disability. So, we right now cover children whose disabilities, the severity of their disability is 50% or more. That means that those who are between 0 and 50% don't get the benefit of being in this program. So, we're going to raise the threshold up to 25%. That means we'll be covering half more of the kids who have an identified disability in an effort very early in life to be able to, to serve them. By the way, how many of you all listen to... By the way, how many of you all listened to the President's State of the Union speech back in January? Lot of people, right? Did you notice his emphasis on early childhood education? We got the most robust early childhood education program in America, ladies and gentlemen. And I don't have any reservation about saying that. We provide pre-K3, pre-K4 to all children in the District of Columbia. At least we have enough seats for every child at this stage. Now, we're trying to get the distribution right. So we want to be the poster city for the continued development of pre-K3, pre-K4 services, and then infant toddler services too that will be developed in this program. The President, in the budget that he released today, asked for $75—was that right? $75 billion to invest in early childhood education. And I hope some of that money comes to the District of Columbia, because we have done it all with our own money up to this stage, and given the fact that we were out there first and before everybody else, we deserve—don't y'all think we deserve some of that federal money to serve our children? And by the way, those services will help to deal with a problem that is very difficult, and that is truancy. We're going to put more money on—in truancy. Where's our deputy mayor? She was over there a couple of minutes ago. Where'd she go?
She's in the hallway.
In the hallway. In any event, she's been working hard with truancy and with our deputy mayor for education, and we're going to put a million dollars in and probably more money eventually. And we're investing also in UDC, almost $2 million to help add to services at UDC and the authority to spend almost $10 million more as they try to get their ship righted up there. The last priority is growing and diversifying our economy. Again, if you count the cranes across this city—I don't know—I don't know if this is accurate or not, but it sounds accurate to me—we have more cranes actively working in this city than any city in America. I—I—I've been to a number of cities, and I don't see that much action going on other places. We are—we have a lot going on. We have a lot going on, ladies and gentlemen. And the Skyland Shopping Center, which is the longest undone project in the history of creation, 23 years ago, people would promise there would be a new shopping center there. We have now swept away all the legal impediments, and we have started tearing down the buildings, and there will be a new shopping center. And that's, by the way, a substantial part of what it will look like. See the—see the renderings up at the top? It will be anchored by a Walmart, which has made a commitment to go there. And we will invest $40 million in a TIF, a tax increment financial instrument. Down on the waterfront, we're going to relocate some of the DC water facilities. How many of y'all go to any of the baseball games? Got a pretty good team this year, don't we? I think they're playing tonight. They were—they were 5-2, I think, going into tonight's game. They lost a couple of games to Cincinnati over the weekend in that little Little League ballpark that they have up in Cincinnati at this stage. But the ballpark area is developing and developing rapidly. There's new restaurants and other places that are opening almost weekly down there as—and as we speak. Poplar Point, we have proposed to put the FBI building as it moves off of Pennsylvania Avenue sometime in the future. It is—we propose to put that at Poplar Point. We would invest money in the infrastructure and working with the federal government to create a new location for the FBI. And will create a new opportunity for us to develop Pennsylvania Avenue, which is a great location. Putting a lot of money in St. Elizabeth's. St. Elizabeth's, by the way, is going to become, in part, a technology center for the city. And there are three firms that we've been working with to encourage them to locate there. It's incredible that Sidlum, which is a French firm, has made a commitment to come to the city. We're working with another one called Smartvim. And can you believe that Microsoft is thinking about coming and locating in Ward Eight on the St. Elizabeth's campus in the District of Columbia? That would create more jobs, technology jobs, and probably be a great catalyst for further development in the city. I've already talked about streetcars. We're going to be investing $34 million in great streets and across the city, $170 million in local streets, sidewalks, and bridges. And y'all familiar with the South Capitol Street Bridge? We are proposing to build a new South Capitol Street Bridge that will cost us $622 million, including work on the streets of Sutland Parkway and South Capitol Street and whatnot, which will create a whole new experience for folks who are coming into the city. Right—it's right by the ballpark is where it starts, and the other side of it, of course, is over on the Ward Eight Southeast side. So we're hoping that that will stay in the budget as well. Now, we worked with our folks to create a—how many have seen the Sustainability Plan? You need to read that. It really is—I—I think—it's something we're proposing to do over the next 20 years as our population grows. But there are about 200 projects, capital projects, in our budget that are consistent with our Sustainability Plan, and I won't talk about all of those tonight, of course. But they deal with transportation, water, food, our buildings that already exist in the city, health and wellness, and a program that we started this year and we want to continue into next year is called a Sustainable DC Budget Challenge of $5 million. Now, the last two slides are the Revised Revenue Priority List. And that is, as much as we are able to do in this budget, there are some things that we cannot do because we don't have enough money to do it. So we'll get another revenue estimate, right, Eric, in June, another one in September, and then another one after that in December. And we hope that there will be additional money that will be generated for the city. And if there is, we've created a list of things that we say we would like to fund if we get more money. And I'm sure the council will have ideas too, as it works on the budget, that it wants to include in the—in the priority list should we get more money. So this is an exciting budget for me. It's—it's—it is—we've gotten to this point because we were prudent the first couple of years, first couple of budgets we did. We had to hold back on things and get ourselves fiscally stable. We are much more fiscally stable now than we were two years ago, and there's a lot that we can do with that. You know, one of the things that's not in this budget that I will mention, and that is, we had a—I guess I'll call it a groundbreaking, but our Office of Cable Television is going to be relocating into a building that we own. We had a—a—I don't know—wall breaking or whatever you want to call it about a week and a half ago. And they're going—we bought a building that was previously owned by BET over off of Brentwood Road over in Ward Five. And they will be moving—for the first time, Office of Cable Television will have its own home. DC Network will have its own home. That will be a nice place for them to be located, have a nice set of studios and other—other amenities that I think will be one of the nicest public channels or sets of channels in the—in the nation. I'm looking forward to that. So with that having been said, I will be happy now to open it up to any questions that we have. Any questions or comments?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
My name is Lena Aquiline. I'm vice chair of ANC 1A and on the executive board at Tubman Elementary School.
We were with you at Parkview, the recreation—
A couple of weeks ago for the new rec center ribbon cutting. So it appears with regard to school modernizations that the timeline keeps getting pushed farther and farther back. I can speak for Tubman Elementary School in particular with what I'm very proud to say a principal who was just awarded the very prestigious Washington Post Distinguished Educational Leadership Award this week. We've been waiting for Phase Three for a number of years. We have quite unenviable common areas, office spaces, and bathrooms. And we have never been told when we will see Phase Three, and it appears from tonight that we have to wait at least another three or four years for that to happen. So with the budget surplus as it is and with the number of schools that you plan to address in Ward One, why do we need to wait another three to five years to see this happen? Why can we not provide our students with the state-of-the-art facilities that they so much deserve starting now? Thank you.
I—I wish—I wish we could do all of them immediately. In fact, we're doing—you know, we're doing the renovation and rebuilding of schools at a faster pace than anywhere. Now, there may be opportunities to be able to accelerate this based on additional money that we get in, I guess, over the next two or three years, right, John? I'm going to—John is our capital budget guru, director, and I know you may want to add something to that.
Yes, the—the cost of the school modernization is exceeding $400 million a year. And now that we're through the recession, prices on our bids are coming in higher on the modernization scopes. But we don't want to sacrifice quality, and the kids deserve the very best. So we will look high and low for every dollar we can find to continue the commitment Mayor Gray has had for the past three years.
I know that's probably not an answer you want to hear, but it's the reality that we face. And, you know, we are—we will—we will be finishing during this—this fiscal plan. We'll be finishing all of our high schools, and those high schools are the most expensive ones. We can probably do a couple of elementary schools for the cost of one high school. Is that right, John? Ten, okay. Well, as we get through the high schools, well, things will open up more, and if we get more revenue in, it'll open up more borrowing capacity also as we go forward. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to do some of these schools faster than otherwise would be the case. But we had to—we had to lay this out at this point based on what we think the dollars will be over the next several years. But each year, I think we've been able to accelerate, is that right? So I'm hopeful that, given where we are in the city and the anticipated additions that we will have, that we'll be able to accelerate that. So I appreciate your point. I support your point. And it's hard for me to stand up and say, "Well, some will be done right now, some will be done next year, and then some won't be done for three or four years." You know, when we first started this journey, people were saying it was going to take—I don't know—about 20 years to renovate all the schools in the city. And we said, "We're not going to do that. It's just too long." So we've actually compressed the amount of time, but it is still a longer period than I wish we had to—to had—to endure. Oh, all right.
Mayor Gray, my name is Patrick Nelson. I'm a resident over right off of Georgia Avenue. And my question is to you in reference to the Howard Town Center tax abatement that is in Bill Number 191010 that was approved by the City Council. Why are you not supporting—supporting that tax abatement?
Why am I not supporting what?
The tax abatement for the Howard Town Center that was proposed.
Oh, because—and—and CFO is at the same place we are, because we don't think that they've made the case to be able to—to need that money. We've asked, we've tried to work with them, we've had meetings with the CFO's office, we've had meetings with our deputy mayor's office, and as—I don't know—over a period of four or five years, it would be substantial amount of money. And we've asked them to be able to make the case. Is that right, Gordon? Have you been working on that? Okay. But Eric, you may want to address it also. But we've been working with them. So I'm not supporting it because the need hasn't been demonstrated. I'm not saying that there isn't a need for the project, but if there isn't a demonstrated need for the—the—the level of tax abatement that's been requested, I'm not going to stand up and be disingenuous with folks and—you know, and say I support something that I don't support. So that's essentially it.
Good evening, Mayor Gray. I'm Dottie Love Wade, ANC 1A. Several years ago, during the school close down and consolidation efforts, Bruce Monroe was closed to the Children of Columbia Heights. They were moved primarily to either Tubman or to Parkview. We were told at that time that Bruce Monroe would be torn down and a smaller, more efficient school would be built because it was one of those horrible open-space schools. However, there is no discussion going on now about rebuilding Bruce Monroe. And I noticed in all of the discussion on education and schools in Ward One, there was no mention of a rebuild for Bruce Monroe. Do you know anything about that and have any thoughts on it?
Well, I can tell you, I wasn't involved in that. I—I wasn't the one who made the commitment to rebuild Bruce Monroe. I think there were questions about that when—the—when the commitment was made. I'm not sure I would have made that commitment. If I had made the commitment, I would have fulfilled it. But it doesn't—it—it's not something that's in the plan right now. What's happened is Bruce Monroe has been merged with Parkview, and there's an effort now being made to put money into Parkview to really upgrade that. There was—there was talk at the time of creating some kind of economic development project on the same site as Bruce Monroe. I never saw—I never saw anything of—you know, of what exactly that would entail. And I—I—I won't take responsibility for that because I had nothing to do with it.
So will it be expanded as a park, the Bruce Monroe site? It's a park now.
It—it is—a park and a playground.
A park and a playground. Will it be expanded?
I—I don't know if that'll be expanded. It will remain as it is at this point. I think it's something we can work with the community on, Dottie, in terms of what the future will be. But I can—I can assure you—because I'm a pretty candid person. I try to be honest with folks. There is no plan at this stage to build a new Bruce Monroe, and I honestly don't know why that commitment was made in the first place. I—I don't—I'm pretty sure I would not have made that commitment, and I think it was one of those things in the heat of the moment, because there were a lot of people who were advocating for rebuilding Bruce Monroe, and there were statements that were made that I don't think ever had the likelihood of seeing the light of day. Yep.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is—
How you doing?
Mayor Gray, excuse me. My name is Policia Stallworth. I'm a resident of Ward One. I also run a foundation. My question is concerning parks and recreation. You outlined specific facilities, but I'm wondering, as a whole, will the budget include extending the recreation center hours as well as transportation to pick and drop the youth up?
Transportation?
Yes.
Transportation for what?
Um, years back, Parks and Recs, there used to be services to drop the youth off in the evening, so I'm wondering if that will come back.
Yeah, I don't—I don't—I don't think that will be done because we now have so many centers that are much more, you know, accessible in our—in our communities. And we've—we've been building a lot of new centers and being staffed by our director, Gary, and his staff working with that. So I don't know, Jesus, I don't think there'll be any transportation that will be added. And then the question was, will it be any addition of hours to the services?
So—so, good evening, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. The—the plan isn't right now to increase—to add any transportation. We actually do have a—a small transportation division that focuses on—well, there's there's two sides to it. One is we focus on trans—we have some buses, we transport folks to events. We also have a—a fleet of vans that does do kind of what you're describing now, is when there’re—there’re athletic events, we transport kid—kids back and forth. I will say, Mr. Mayor, with regards to the operating hours, we're—we're actually just embarked on a master planning process that's going to drive those decisions in the future. So we're going out to all of the communities and asking for your input, and we're going to sort of look—look at the input, we're going to look at the data, best practices, what everybody else is doing, and really make some decisions about what the—the right operating hours should be. So we're not making those decisions, and we're not requesting funding for those at this point until we have the information that's going to come out of this master plan.
So that's the needs assessment you're talking about?
It—it's a comprehensive needs assessment. It's really going to look at everything that we're doing across the city, making some decisions based on where the needs are, what kind of programming we should be offering across the city, and then obviously what kinds of facilities we should be building in the future as well.
You'll be coming out to the community to report those findings once you have—
Absolutely. We just kicked off—well, actually, we're going to come out to the community to get information, to—to contribute to those findings. And we just kicked off the—the—the process. We're going to have our public kickoff in early May, and then we're going to come out to all of the communities. We're going to do surveys, focus groups, interviews. Just really, we want to hear what the community has to say, and then we'll do—we'll—we'll overlay the data that we gather with that, and then we'll come out with some—some strategies on how to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go over here.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Excuse me. I just want to know what your intentions are as far as housing for people that want to fix incomes who are overqualified financially to get Section 8 vouchers. Right now, I live in the House of—Department—I've been there for a number of years under rent control. I'm now being unfortunately priced out. Where can I go to? Because every place I go to, look, I don't have the income. I might have the credit score and the credit, but I don't have the income.
You asking about Section 8 vouchers?
No, sir.
I—I'm having a hard time hearing. The acoustics are really bad in here.
Okay, what I'm saying is, I don't—because of my income, and I was forced into retirement, okay, I'm not qualified for Section 8 vouchers, okay? Which means that—is there an alternative program for that? Right, because I'm being priced out even though I'm under rent control.
Yeah. Well, two things. One, we have the local rent supplement program, which we'd be happy—if somebody here from the Housing Authority? Okay. See that—see that person with her hand up back there? I want you to connect with her. The second thing is, we are—we are committing ourselves to put $100 million into affordable housing. I wish it were more, but that is a lot of money, but not—and not as much as I would like to be able to put into it. And you—you know, as that housing develops and it'll start—we'll start working on it this year, now—we're not going to wait till next fiscal year, there may be way— this year, now, we're not going to wait till next fiscal year, there may be ways in which you can qualify for that. Without knowing all the details of your income, I can't give you a complete answer on that. But the idea really is to try to keep people in the city who want to be here and don't see such a shrinking pool of housing that people no longer can afford to live in the city. So why don't you connect with her right now, and then we'll look forward to working with you on the affordable housing budget. I would invite you to come down and testify so that we can get that $100 million in the budget that will at least get us started to do the kind of things that you want to do.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is China Dickerson, and I actually came from Charleston, South Carolina to Washington DC in 2002 to attend Howard University. And now I'm at the law school, Howard University School of Law. And my question actually relates to the gentleman's question. I think what he was trying to say, which is going to filter my question, we're not interested so much in the affordable housing? I live in Columbia Heights right now on 13th Street, and what I'm noticing is, since I first got here in 2002, we're being priced out because of the development that is going on, that is granted to companies that only build condos and apartments that are 2,000, 1,500 up a month. And so I'm wondering what you are doing to advocate for companies to come in and build housing, apartments, condos that are more affordable?
That's exactly what I was talking about.
Okay.
Well, when you, when you say you're not interested in affordable housing, what do you mean by that?
So when I saw on your budget plan, you were, and you mentioned affordable housing, I'm not exactly sure what that means, because you said to him Section 8. So that's what I'm thinking.
He said Section 8. He, I, he, he asked about Section 8. He said he didn't qualify for Section 8. So I was trying to respond to his question. This is not Section 8 housing that we created. That's federal. We have nothing to do with Section 8 other than administering the vouchers that we get in the city. So I was just trying to respond to his question. Affordable housing, for those who want to know, means that we start with the area median income. And the area median income, which includes all these counties around the district, is really high. It's $102,000. So we, we, we build affordable housing, or we will, on the basis of a percentage of, of the area median income. And we're going to go down as low as 0% to 30% of the area median income. So that means, zero, zero, of course, but it means you would go up to about $30,000 for the household income that you would qualify even if your income was that low. And we expect to either renovate or build housing that then would be available at those rents. And the reason why they can be available at those rents, because we are subsidizing through our money the building of that. And in return for that, we get people to lower the rents. They say, we say, if we're going to give you money to build, then you've got to bring the rents down to a point that is manageable or affordable for those people who want to continue to live in the city.
But does that also mean then, I'm sorry, does that also mean then you will limit the space that the development companies have to, because that means that you would need, the city would need the space?
Not necessarily. It just means that what might have cost, let's say for sake of argument, might have cost $1,500, now may cost a third of that, or may cost, you know, half of that, because we paid for helping to build that housing. And so if I'm, you know, I'm helping you pay, pay for something to help you build it, the return for us is lower the price. You're welcome. By the way, congratulations on, what, what year are you in? Second, all right. Well, you, you got, you, you only got, it's only a three-year program, right? So you're on your way. You're just about to finish your second year, huh?
Yeah.
Good for you. And good luck when you take the bar. Okay. Why don't we go to the other side?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I must congratulate-
You know, you told me earlier how old you are. Would you mind telling the audience, because I think it is phenomenal?
91. Thank you. What I wanted to know, you must forgive me, my teeth were mysteriously, they disappeared while I was in the hospital. So it, my, my speech is a bit, uh-
I'm, you know what, Frank, can you, when she finishes, because I'm, the acoustics in here are really tough.
Yes, and I'm here myself.
So if you can interpret for me what the question is, I'd appreciate it.
Don't put it too close, I'm here myself.
It's not, it's not her fault. It's just the acoustics in here, these high ceilings.
I wanted to congratulate you on everything that you achieved. May God bless you, guide you, and keep you out of harm's way. And, uh, also, I would like to know when the charlies, I mean, the streetcars come through, did you keep in mind the senior citizens?
Yes.
Disabled?
Yes.
Will they be able to have a ramp or whatever you call it? Oh, good, thank you.
Absolutely. I went out to Portland, Oregon, I've been out there twice to see their streetcar system. And there are, they, they have a button that a person with a disability can push on the streetcar before they get on, and it creates a ramp for people to get on. I actually saw people who were in wheelchairs getting on the streetcar system in Portland. So our cars will definitely be accessible to people who have physical challenges.
Oh, good. And another thing, you said you're going to build the new mall? Did you say the, a new mall for Washington DC?
No, no, we're going to build a new shopping center. This is a Skyland Shopping Center over in Southeast, but no, we're not going to build a new mall. In fact, it's interesting, now people are not, they're not building, in terms of shopping centers, they're not building malls now much anymore. I don't know why, but folks want to build town centers, that's what they're called. And have you all noticed that a lot of our stores that are being built now, are being built with residential on top of them? And you know what that does, which is great, it has a built-in clientele to be able to shop in those places. So let me go over to here, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you for coming out tonight. It's a pleasure to have you give this presentation to us. My name is Adam Clarkson. I'm a member of Sacred Heart up the street and a member of Good Faith Community Coalition. We're concerned about affordable housing and homelessness in our area and in the city. And I know there's been a lot of news with DC General and homeless families and children not having room there. My understanding is that the Fair Budget Coalition estimates that an annual commitment of $5 million could provide shelter for these families. Do you feel that your budget meets those needs? And if so, what will happen to these families under this proposed budget?
I think one of the things we're clearly trying to do is to create more affordable housing in the city. That's the, that's the top of the, top of the list is affordable housing for the city. And certainly, our homeless families will be at the top of the list of those who need to be accommodated. You know, what's interesting is, I was talking to some folks today about this. I was on a panel today with the executives from the surrounding counties. The District of Columbia has 11% of the population for our region, 11%, but we have 54% of the affordable housing in the entire region. And if you took, if you took Montgomery County out, which has a lot of affordable housing, the two of us together probably have almost all of it at this stage. So I'm hoping that the region will do a better job as well in creating affordable housing. But for us right now, homeless families will be one of the priority groups as we create more housing in the District of Columbia. Thank you.
Hi, my name is, oh, my goodness.
Oh, yeah?
My name is Emily Campos, and I'm a sophomore at Columbia Heights Educational Campus. And Columbia Heights Educational Campus has increased its enrollment by 88 students, and yet we still lose three positions, one teaching position and two administrative positions. Last year, we lost our librarian position and two other positions. If we increase our enrollment and the per pupil allocation, what was increased by 2%? Why is our school losing positions?
I think, I think I get, I'm sure we have somebody from DCPS in here. Yes, sir, come on up. You can grab the mic over. I'll get started and you can pick up from there. The question I think you're asking is one that I've heard several times, and that is, what's happening with the, the funding for certain schools? What has happened the last couple of years is that we have had enrollment projections, you know, for the school, for DCPS and then all of those schools. And last year, nor this year, did a number of our schools meet those enrollment projections. And so we said, listen, we can't continue to do this. It's not going to, it's probably not going to get through the council, because this would be the third consecutive year where we might have projected 10,000 students and there's only 9,000 students. So we can't request funding on that basis. So even though some of the schools may have even increased their enrollment projection for next year, it may still not have met what the budget was for this year. So that's what you're seeing, are adjustments that are being made to reflect the actual enrollment of the schools at this stage. Chris?
Yes, sir. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And obviously, we really appreciate the question. I think that one of the challenges in the process is what the mayor alluded to, which is that we see fluctuations between individual schools, even in a climate where we see the overall school budget increasing. The good thing for Columbia Heights is that you're absolutely right. The school is growing by about 60 students from where they were audited at this year. We're also seeing an increase of their budget by about $600,000. So if you take those 60 students and that $600,000, that's about $10,000 per student. That's actually more than what we receive through the mayor's funding model for each student. In addition, specific to Columbia Heights, we're also going to undertake a technology upgrade this year over at the school. And so all those rooms that have, you know, iffy internet and some of the classrooms that haven't received all the technology we'd like to see, we're going to undertake to improve that over the course of the summer. And I think that when you guys come back in the fall, not only will you see, you know, that, that nice new technology upgrade, I think that budget is, is going to match what the school truly needs. 60 new students, $600,000, that, that feels like a pretty good fit to us.
One of the things that we are thinking about doing, and I've talked to the chancellor about it, I've talked to the people at the Office of the State Superintendent of Education also, and that is, the enrollment audit is done once a year, and it establishes then how many kids there, you know, how many students there are in the school. We're thinking about making that a more frequent process, because a number of DCPS schools are saying, well, listen, my enrollment went up after the audit was done. What do we do about that? Or, you know, students may have left certain charter schools and come back to the DCP Public Schools. So what do we do about the fact that we may have started with 500 students, but now we have 600 students in the school? So we're probably going to try to figure out a process that will allow the, the schools to get credit for the fact that their enrollment may, may be increasing after the audit is done. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Joyce Lynn Thompson. I live in Ward 1. I live close to Howard University. I applaud all the new construction that we have in the city. But what that excavation has brought us is increase in rats. Is there a comprehensive plan to combat this rat situation? I don't go out in my backyard in late evening, late afternoon. I can't. From the construction that I've seen in residential in my own neighborhood, when that digging takes place, we have rats running as big as cats, and I'm sure is in other parts of the city. So in addition to retrofitting these cans, public cans, and the super cans that we are getting, what is the comprehensive plan to combat this rat situation that's going on?
Well, we do have a program to, to abate rats, and that is in the Department of Health. I can't give you all the details on it, but we recognize too that construction sometimes leads to an increase in the rodent population. If you are having that problem, you know, yourself, I'd like to get your name and your information and address, and we'd like to have somebody come out from our health department and, and, and try to address it for you.
Comprehensive plan?
Well, I know, I know what you said, but let's start with your situation, okay? There may be a comprehensive plan, but I can't articulate that for you, because I don't know what the comprehensive rat plan is. But I know that we can try to help you with your situation, and then we'll make sure somebody gets the information to you about a plan.
They know me at the Health Department. They come out regularly. But what I was asking is an overall plan. In addition to individual citizens calling, and you get that abatement, an overall plan is what I was asking.
See that man right there? That's our director of the Department of Health. I'm going to ask him to try to address it further than what I did. Dr. Levin and Dr. Waldau? One of you?
Well, thank you. It is a great question. And obviously, we start off with the individuals who do have rat problems, but obviously, in a whole city, you want to make sure that as you begin to do construction and buildings, you know, rats tunnel under. So we do have a plan that as we begin to hear of populations of rats in different areas where there may be construction, we will go out and actually begin to do rat abatement. And we will literally go through the neighborhoods of the whole of the District of Columbia as a sweep across the ways to really try and ensure that we can eradicate as many rats as possible. And Dr. Waldau and Mr. Sutler are the experts. You just give them a call and they'll be there that day if you have an-
All right, let's go up to the other side.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, my name is Saido Mansari. I'm a parent at Columbia Heights Educational Campus, and I'm representing the Parent Teacher Student Organization, PTSU for short. My concern is about the, on same budget, where in the, there is an allocation for the, based on the needs of the students, that's the way the, the school has been allocated an additional sum of money. Now, for example, the school, the, the system allocates money for limited proficient English students. But then Columbia Heights Educational Campus has one of the largest number of these students. So why is it that the school is not allocated this money? That's my question.
I, I think that's the question that the young lady asked before you, and it was just explained by the gentleman from DCPS and myself. And that is, sometimes these budgets have been based on, on enrollment projections that even if they have more students, they still don't meet the projection that was met. So you, you, Chris, you can explain it one more time if you want, but I really think it's the same question that was raised by the young student who preceded you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I would add, I think you asked specifically about the English language learners, the ELLs, how we fund that. So, so you're absolutely right. I mean, Columbia Heights has a unique model where they're introducing the dual language, they've also got the high population of ELL students, and those two things, although similar, are not the same, right? And so we're trying to support a dual language program, which may have ELL students, may not, we're also trying to specifically support ELL students. I think the good news is this, is that we're going to hold the funding level for Columbia Heights for next year to the same level that we held it this year, and we anticipate approximately the same number of ELL students. So I think there's some work to be done in how we navigate what a dual language program looks like, what a unique funding stream for a dual language program could look like, but also understanding that we're still maintaining our commitment to the existing ELL students, the new anticipated, you know, sixth graders and ninth graders at the program. That funding will remain the same next year as it was this year.
My question is, I took a look at everything in the budget, and the District of Columbia has a high unemployment rate. Preparing the workforce for the new economy, what can you do in the budget to entice or encourage businesses to locate to the district that would hire people with a high school diploma? What do high school graduates, what are they going to be prepared for as far as work goes? Because the unemployment rate in the district is too high.
Well, it is too high, but I hope you heard me earlier when I said it's coming down. We've gone from 11.2% down to 8.6%. And I guess, Lisa, we'll get new information next week on the unemployment rate. The regional, the regional unemployment rate actually was encouraging for the month of February, which is the information that we will get next week. But still, I agree with you, the unemployment rate is, is still too high, but we're going in the right direction. Now, there will be jobs that are being created in tourism and hospitality. There are a number of jobs that are being created now. In fact, when I talked about LimeFresh, for example, which is open now on 14th Street and is now planning to open another location, a number of the jobs that they, that they have, if not all of those jobs, would be jobs that would be eligible for people who if not all of those jobs, would be jobs that would be eligible for people who have a high school, uh, education. Now, that having been said, we are, we are reaching a point in our society where having a high school education is not going to be enough for a lot of jobs. Uh, and that's why we're encouraging, um, the, the, uh, our students to stay in school and either try to focus on a career in technical education, uh, curriculum, or to go on to college thereafter because it's gonna be increasingly demanding. We are creating, uh, new jobs in, uh, technology. Uh, we're bringing firms into the city. Uh, we have a new startup operation, uh, on 15th Street called 1776, which is, uh, gonna help to create firms that deal with technology. But a lot of those jobs are gonna require an education at a level that's higher than a high school education. We're now trying to embed in our high schools STEM education, science, technology, engineering, and math, to get our kids equipped. If they're coming out of high school, they will have some level of skills that would be marketable, but hopefully going on to a community college or a four-year college to be able to build upon those skills. So, simply put, the unemployment level is coming down. We are creating jobs in hospitality and tourism and in the medical fields, you know, allied health that will be available for people who may not have college education. But my advice to young people is to stay in school, get that first diploma, and then go on to college thereafter and get either a two-year or four-year degree.
So, high school graduates don't have, there are no jobs that are being created for high school graduates?
I didn't say that. That is exactly, I, I, that's not, not what I said. I said there are jobs in tourism and hospitality, some of our allied health fields for people who have, uh, high school diplomas. But there's gonna be a shrinking pool of jobs, in my opinion, uh, for people who only have a high school education because the demands of employment are increasing rapidly. That will shrink that pool of jobs for people who only have a high school education.
So, high school graduates can't get a job that they can afford the housing in the District of Columbia?
Right. What would you like me to say to that? I'm, I'm, I've tried to do the best job I could in answering your question.
Well, you see, you said that you were, that you are educating and preparing the workforce for the new economy.
Correct.
So, the public school, the public school systems-
When I talk about technology, and when I talk about STEM education, we're trying to prepare young people to go on to the next level. There will be jobs in those fields for some high school graduates, but most people will be required to have a higher level degree. That's, when we say preparing young people for the new economy, that includes getting them prepared at, at skill levels beyond what a high school education would provide.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Yes?
So, hi, my name is Anna Galais. I'm a freshman from Czech, um, and I'm representing the SGA member. So, my question is, all of the high school except Czech gets additional funds for so, special programs. We are especially middle schools and high school. And we have the only high school Spanish bilingual program. Since we don't get funds for our special programs, we cannot afford a lot of, a lot that students need in high school. How can Czech get extra fund for special programs like the other high schools do?
I think that's, you're talking about Columbia Heights Education Campus, right?
Yes, sir.
You could try to, try for the third time, Chris.
Thank you. So, so what you're referring to is, is our, we have a small number of schools, it's not all our high schools in fact, that receive what we call specialty funds. That's schools without walls, McKinley Tech, Duke Ellington, uh, Baloo is on that same list. And frankly, those funds are associated with established commitments that we had that go all the way back to the Board of Education. We've not invited new schools in that mix. We frankly can't afford to. If, if there was a way to create, you know, a, a sustainable high school dual-language specialty funding stream, we would do it. Right now, we don't have that means. I think what we're continuing to explore with Principal Tukiva is how do we embark on this new thing, this dual-language program for, for ninth through 12th? And I think the way in which we're going to do that is, one, continue to support the school based on the expected number of students. To, to, you know, your peers questioned earlier about how we're funding Columbia Heights, we're funding it at the same level that we funded it this year, plus $600,000 for the 60 or so new students we expect on top of what they actually enrolled this year. And moving beyond that, I think we've got to figure out what the intersection is between our ELL student population, where we do receive directed funds to serve those students, as well as the, the option of a dual-language program and how we support that. And, and that question exists not only for Columbia Heights, but as we continue to expand our dual-language offerings, schools like Bancroft and Cleveland, both in Ward 1, you know, Oyster Adams, how do we, how do we do this for the long term? How do we do it fairly for, for students who may not be in a dual-language program? What's the, the equity between those two things? But it's just something that, that we'll, we'll continue to work on. And I think that as you look at DCPS and the charters and surrounding jurisdictions, how to truly fund a dual-language model is still something that, you know, especially in public education, we're working to perfect. There's, there's not a one-size-fits-all. Um, I think we're gonna keep working with Tukiva. She's probably in the top five dual-language principals on the East Coast, if not in the country. Um, what she's doing there is, is truly remarkable. And I think that if anybody can succeed, as we still figure out what the long-term funding is going to be, it is her. Uh, so I know that doesn't answer all of your questions, but if you want to talk a little bit more, um, and frankly, for anybody else who has Columbia Heights questions, I'm happy to make myself available and, and talk about it after the, after the meeting.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir. You'll be the last person on this side, and then we'll go to get all the people on that side.
Mayor Berry, Mayor Gray, my name is Charles Webb. I'm with my neighbor, Ellen Shaplewski.
Hi.
We li, we, we live at the Plaza West Cooperative, 1669 Columbia Road, and I rise to thank you for the repeal of the possessory interest tax. We are a Lotto, a unit, and it's a tremendous effort. I, I recognize Mr. Shefina, Fashina, I'm sorry, Basil, I apologize. But, you know, we grew quite fond of one another in working over this possessory interest tax. So, Mayor Gray, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. We were glad to do it, and, uh, we will continue to work with it to try to make sure that people who want to live in this city have a chance to live here.
That's all we want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go back over here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
How you doing?
My name is Gloria Wilburn. Um, I had been in touch with you at one point. But this is just based on my situation. I'm facing homelessness. I was evicted from a building that my family had invested in and bought shares in since the 70s, and I even have deed to it. What I wanted to know was, is why is so little emphasized for Ward 1 residents that are homeless, or the, um, plan that you have, only 1 million, and you started out with 400 million in building projects? And why is it only 1 million for the homeless that are in shelters? And why is there not enough money provided for subsidies in all of these new apartment buildings coming up? We are no way are going to be able to have a chance to live in it because it is an income barrier. And whether we have Section 8 or not, all of these buildings right in this vicinity that are coming up so fast have nothing, um, subsidized, no unit set aside for anyone that's on a fixed income or the homeless, uh, people that receive, uh, tannin or welfare when they are wrongfully evicted. I just want to know why they haven't put enough into Ward 1 or for that matter, for the entire city-
Okay, I think I-
For the homeless.
I think I got the question. Um, we, we, we're putting a lot more than a million dollars, uh, into these efforts. Um, when I, I'm not sure which, which, um, area, when I mentioned a million dollars, I was really talking about a whole list of things. Um, we are putting $100 million into affordable housing. Um, there are things that DHS, under, under David Burns's leadership, is doing to try to get people to a different place. Are you receiving tannin funds at this stage?
Social.
I'm sorry?
I'm on social security.
SSI?
Yes.
Okay. Um, then, you know, I, I would ask you if you can connect with Director Burns before you go, and we'll try to figure out because mon, one of, some of the money we're putting into this is to try to make sure people don't become homeless in the first place. Because from a human perspective and a financial perspective, it just makes more sense to try to keep people, uh, stabilized where they are, if we can possibly do that. So if you can connect with, uh, Director Burns, he's coming around. See him coming around? We'll try to see what we can do to help you, um, at this point.
Okay.
Thank you for your question.
Thank you.
Okay. Sir, you're gonna have the last question of the night. Isn't that an honor?
It is such an honor. And it's gonna be a positive, on a positive note.
Okay.
Um, I support your budget for FY 2014, Mayor. Um, I say, keep at it. Clench that fiscal fist, and I think four suggestion points for the four wards and benefiting everybody in this room and in the district could be, one, DC schools, let's get more school counselors in there. Let's get some IT investment in, in, expedite all of this. IT investment. And then athletics, let's encourage them. Let's make it a safe place for them. Two, the rest aren't in priority order. Voter registration online, I know you're for it. I tweeted you and you favorited it. My response. Let's get that stack. It'll help you politically, everybody. People that don't have access to a computer, but they, they can go to a library. Three, um, oversight of, you know, increased oversight and to deplete the corruption because that's, that's where a lot of the money goes, where we don't know, but sometimes we catch the people. And then, just a heads up, number four, um, I advise, and I think you will, I, I, I support you, and I know you're a great leader, that economic development, sustainable urban planning. Um, Matt Abertz says I'm from the heart of the U Street corridor, but this is applicable to everywhere in the district. It's coming down the way where ANC, 1B, I, I'm also on the Meridian Hill Neighborhood Association, and ANC's and organizations everywhere are gonna fight. It, it, not, you know, we're gonna, I hope we don't fight. We're asking for your support-
Mm-hmm.
-when we do, for assistance and leverage from your, your office to increase daytime foot traffic, to make a sustainable city. And I think that you can do it, and you can make the city much better.
Thank you.
And fight, fight the, uh, big JBG company and all them taxes, you know?
Well-
You know what I'm talking about. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And by the way, I hope you have a copy of our, have you, have you seen, or you have a copy of our Sustainable DC Plan?
I don't have a hard copy with me.
I'm gonna make sure you get a hard copy.
I have your whole budget tonight.
Uh, we've got, we've got a gentleman who will give you a sustainable, hard copy of our Sustainable DC Plan. Where, where are you, Cedric?
Right here.
Okay. Can you make sure he gets a copy of it? See this gentleman right here? He's gonna get you a hard copy of the Sustainable DC Plan. We think it is one of the most-
Can I get it with a signature?
Pardon?
Please?
Signature? I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
And it is a signature program for us, uh, as well. And, um, I think it's one of the most forward-thinking programs, and there are people in this room who helped to work on it. We got our Director of Planning over there, Harry Trigoni, who worked on it, uh, and other people who helped to bring this plan to fruition. And it's not a short-term plan. It's, it's gonna unfold over the next, uh, 20 years. And, you know, in terms of dealing with, um, developers, we hope to bring, by our policies, bring them into, uh, embracing a city that really will be able to survive and sustain itself in the years, um, ahead because of the policies around water, around the built environment, around how we deal with waste and other things that are important to our environment. Um, and I appreciate the other comments that you made. Now, first of all, appreciate, obviously, you are very informed, um, as well, and I, I appreciate, again, you coming out tonight. And, uh, thank the Meridian Hill, uh, Neighborhood Association for being one of our sponsors, uh, tonight as well. And that ends our Town Hall meeting in Ward 1. Thank you all very much, ladies and gentlemen. (applause)